I know. But yeah, I mean, this is on my list to one day win. I hope, I don't know, am I allowed? No, you probably are the ones that I know, right?
Recording in progress.
Okay, there we go. All right, if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll call the meeting to order at 7:03 PM. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Von Crooks, Benedetti.
Here.
Kebba Watten.
Present.
Hornbeck.
Here.
Peruzzi.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rezepa.
Here.
Corum present, Mayor Rezepa.
May I make a motion to excuse Councilperson Von Crooks?
Support.
Moved and supported to excuse Councilwoman Von Crooks. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. First item we have is the minute approval of the September 2nd, 2025 meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported with minute approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. All right, we'll bring down our folks from the City Beautiful Commission here now. If we could get a motion to make this part of the regular minutes, we've got the annual Home and Business Award Program here. Moved and supported. Any further discussions? Seeing none. All right, unanimously so ordered. There. We'll wait for them to come down and get the microphone, too. No pressure.
Ah, just a little bit, right? Good eve- is it on?
Should be.
Is it very bad? Did you turn it off? There we go. Good evening! Yay! The City Beautiful- You know, I'll just be loud. The City Beautiful Commission would like to take this opportunity to thank the mayor and the city council for a few moments to present our 2025 City Beautiful Awards. This evening, we have five or six residents, two businesses, and a gorgeous honorable mention. The commission could not do what we do without the generous support that ongoings throughout the year from a few important people. Dean, first of all, who supports us and makes sure that we are on the straight and narrow. Holly, the assistant to the mayor, she makes sure that we don't forget anything and printed up all the certificates and made sure all the pictures for the city, for the homes and businesses would be up on the screen. And Debbie put that all together for us. And also, the DPW, Russ Sargent, Russ Foster, and the entire DPW crew. We could never, ever do what we do without their generous support and always willing to help us. From putting up all the baskets along West Jefferson, tucking in all of the ground pots along the benches down on West Jefferson, to bringing out our pots for West Rome, making sure they're filled with compost so that our National Honor Society students from the high school can assist us in planting all the spring flowers and then help us with the cleanup in the fall time. So keep your eyes out because the fall vibe is going to be happening here shortly, probably within a week or so, so keep your eyes out. We don't want to let this go by without mentioning Bob Lewinsky. He is our watering guy. He deadheads make sure the plants have the right amount of fertilizer, the right amount of water. He's out in the, just the heat of the summertime, making sure that those flowers perform. And I hope you agree that they really showcase exceptional this year. So with that being said, I would like to turn it over to our mayor if you would present the first award. And just to let you guys know, together with all the residents, the businesses, all of the city council, and all the help from the DPW, we make Trenton a beautiful place to live, to work, and to visit. Thank you.
All righty, let me get these pulled up here.
Do you want to wear those, Steve?
Is that totally dead?
Yeah, this one's working better.
That's right.
And you guys, make sure you properly display this. You don't have to do it every year of the year. And it's excited. One gets a little sun damage, you can flip it over and just always have a good hair.
All right, well, we'll try that. Okay. We're rustling things around here. All right, first one we have here is, the top left here, we have from the Knoll family. Woo-hoo. Congratulations. Of course, yeah. For you as well, there. Oh, okay. Of course, congratulations and thank you very much. Next up, we have the Sheets family. Got this for you here.
Cindy, are you going to look this way?
No.
I'm gonna trade with you then, Cindy. Next up, we have the Polger family. Congratulations. No, thank you very much. Appreciate you. Congratulations, of course. Thank you. We have the Wood family. Congratulations, of course. Thank you very much. Of course.
There you go, congratulations.
Thank you.
We have the Palumbo family. Congratulations, thank you. Give you this here, too, as well. There you are. Thank you, congratulations. And pardon me if I mispronounce this, the DeGenkold family. Oh, okay, shoot. Thought I had it. Usually I'm pretty good. Congratulations, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Of course, thank you very much. Ramsey's Family Restaurant in Coney Island. Congratulations, sir. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you very much. Hardware and Hobbies. Congratulations, of course. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, last but certainly not least, the Trenton Historical Museum. Congratulations and thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks, Cindy.
Congratulations, of course. Thank you very much. So not to make everyone go through the gauntlet again, but I know everyone from council wants to shake your hand and thank you, too, for all the award winners. So if you want to do that, and then no one's going to make you stay, so we do appreciate that, so thank you.
Fair trade off.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Congratulations, thank you, guys.
Congratulations again, of course. Congratulations. Congratulations, of course. Congratulations again. Congratulations, of course. We're trying. Congratulations.
Nice job, thank you.
Congratulations again, yep, of course. Congrats again, of course. See you soon, take care.
Congratulations, thank you.
How are you doing?
Aw, congratulations.
I'd like totally have to do a double take up there for a second. Congratulations.
How are you? Are you doing okay?
Dude, good to see you. Hope you're doing well. You as well.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you. You guys did a great job.
Aw, congratulations, thank you.
Thank you so very much. Congratulations, we appreciate you. It was earlier, at least it was in the eighties when I made it still, yeah. I'm sweating right now in here. All righty. So next up here, we have proclamation for Constitution Week here. If we can make this a motion to make this part of the regular minutes. Got a motion. Do we have support? All right, I'll read this here in the record. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic and dedicated to rule by law. Whereas September 17th, 2025, marks the 238th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. Whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Stephen Rezepa, as mayor of the city of Trenton, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week in the city of Trenton, encourage all residents to participate in community activities commemorating the special occasion. Is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Next, we've got another proclamation. If we can move, get a motion to make this a part of the regular meeting. Okay, I'll give this a shot again here. Whereas C-Tracks Think Train Week is to be held across the United States from September 15th to 20, 15th to 21st, 2025. Whereas 2,252 rail grade crossings collisions resulted in 749 personal injuries. Were responsible for 268 fatalities in the United States during 2024. Whereas 1,465 pedestrian trespassing casualties have occurred in the United States resulting in 821 pedestrians being killed and other 644 injured while trespassing on railroad property rights away during 2024. Whereas educating and informing the public about rail safety, reminding the public that railroad right of ways are private property, enhancing public awareness of the dangers associated at the highway rail grade crossings, ensuring pedestrians and motorists are looking and listening while near railways, and obeying established traffic laws will reduce the number of avoidable fatalities and injuries caused by incidents involving trains and citizens. And whereas the International Association of Chiefs of Police, National Operation Lifesaver, United States Department of Transportation, all local, state, county, and railroad law enforcement officers, first responders, and railroad corporations commit to partnering together in an effort to educate at a national level all aspects of railroad safety week to enforce applicable laws and support a national C-Tracks Think Train Week. Therefore, I, Stephen Rezepa, mayor of the city of Trenton, by virtue of the power vested in me under the city charter of the city, do hereby proclaim September 15th to 21st, 2025, as National C-Tracks Think Train Week. Encourage all residents to recognize the importance of rail safety education. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. And then lastly, our third proclamation of the evening for Forging Manufacturing Day, and I believe the longest proclamation. If we could get a motion to make this a part of the regular minutes as well. Moved and supported. Whereas North America's forging industry has been identified by the United States Department of Defense as part of America's critical supply chain. Whereas Michigan is home to one of the largest manufacturing workforces and the third largest in the United States. And the city of Trenton is near three forging companies within a 30-minute drive specializing in the manufacturing of a wide range of products, including automotive, aerospace, defense, oil and gas exploration, power generation, wind energy, mining, rail tools. And whereas over the past five years, forging jobs have increased by more than 5% at Trenton Forging. Trenton Forging Company adding new jobs within the city of Trenton, and Trenton Forging Company's average employee wage is $81,600, which makes forging one of the highest-paying sectors in Wayne County, Michigan. Whereas companies in partnership with the Forging Industry Association support educational institutions, including Wayne State University, pre-K school districts, technical schools, community colleges, public and private universities, along with many other educational institutions, nonprofits, and charities in Wayne County, Michigan. Whereas FIA's Forging Educational Foundation funds summer manufacturing camps, children's forging books, e-learning, industry-relevant research to advance the science of forging, and engages students through curriculum, experiential learning, and scholarships to pursue careers in the forging supply chain. Whereas Wayne State University, Monroe Community College, along with many other educational institutions, offer or plan to offer state-of-the-art instruction and high-demand careers, supporting the workforce needs of forging employers in the region. And whereas Trenton Forging Company, located in the city of Trenton, has invested more than $17 million in the capital investments over the past decade. Whereas Trenton Forging Company's forging jobs generate direct wages of over $7.18 million annually and spends over $2.5 million with contractors supporting the creation of downstream jobs and economic growth within the city of Trenton. Whereas as a part of Forging Manufacturers' Day, the second Friday of October, thousands of educational leaders, teachers, counselors, students, and workforce partners will visit forging companies to increase awareness and learn about the opportunities that are directly linked to science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics. And now therefore, I, Stephen Rezepa, mayor of the city of Trenton, by the virtue of power vested in me under the charter of the city, do hereby proclaim Friday, October 10th, 2025, Forging Manufacturing Day. And witness thereof, I, and yeah, it's the end of normal seal stuff in the bottom, so. Forging Manufacturing Day, October 10th, 2025. Any further discussion on that one?
Can you repeat that?
Sorry, you're breaking up. I can't hear. Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered, and do want to thank our good friends and partners at Trenton Forging for that. But I think I've mentioned it before during meetings, but I always think about, I know that they had some of the parts of the Los Angeles Ram Stadium were forged at Trenton Forging, and so whenever I see them on TV, I think about that. It's pretty cool. Next, we have public comment regarding items on today's agenda. This portion of public comment, we have reserved four items on today's agenda. We'll have another opportunity for all other public comment later in the meeting. As to anyone wishing to speak, please begin with their name and address. Direct all questions through me, and please limit their comments to five minutes. There, nothing on Zoom. We'll keep on moving here. All right, we'll go to our appointments now. I'm asking for this body's approval of my reappointments of Cindy Missurick to the City Beautiful Commission, Janice Ritchie to the Civic Commission, Kevin Lucidi to the Traffic Safety Commission for terms expiring October 1st, 2028.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Benedetti.
Yes.
Kebba Watten.
Yes.
Hornbeck.
Yes.
Peruzzi.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Rezepa.
Abstain.
Motion carries, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you all for your concurrence. Next, we've got two resignations that I can actually probably do together. I'm asking for a motion to receive and place on file the letters submitted by Mario Ferrante, resigning from the Planning Commission, and Marlon Nasowitz, resigning from the Downtown Development Authority, and requesting that we send a letter of appreciation for each of their services.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion there? Councilman Pruzzi?
I'd just like to thank Mario. He was an anchor on the Planning Commission. He helped me when I first started out, and I learned a lot from him, and he'll be sorely missed, and I again want to say thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman. All righty, seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. We'll go down to general, 33rd District Court, and I will defer to our court delegate, Councilman Benedetti.
Thank you, Mayor. Moved to approve the application for a waiver and plan retirement health benefit system submitted by the 33rd District Court and authorize the mayor to sign the approval of the application on behalf of the city of Trenton.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Madam Clerk, I'll have you take these next couple here, actually. The first being from 3360 West Jefferson LLC. Just Pickled, the Pickleball Club, to schedule a public hearing to establish a commercial rehabilitation district at 3360 West Jefferson LLC.
Thank you. Pickled, which is 33 West Jefferson LLC, has submitted a letter requesting the body to establish a commercial rehabilitation district. So the first step to do that would be to schedule a public hearing to be held on Monday, October 6th, at 6:45 PM for the purpose of entertaining views and comments from interested individuals regarding the establishment of a commercial rehabilitation district pursuant to Public Act 210 of 2005 as amended for the property located at 3360 West Jefferson.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Next, we have the Evergreen Residents Block Party Request.
The residents of Evergreen are asking for permission to hold a block party on Saturday, October 4th, from 3:00 to 11:00 PM and approve the temporary road closure of Evergreen Street between Strome Avenue and Truwood Street. This would be under the direction of the Police Department and the Public Services Department. And we are requiring, if they do have a food truck, that the food truck is inspected and has a license with the city of Trenton. So this would be pending approval of the food truck.
So moved.
Support. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Then we have another block party request from residents on Canterbury.
And the Canterbury residents are asking for permission to hold a block party on Saturday, October 25th, from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and approve the temporary road blockage of Canterbury Street between Lexington Drive and Norwood Drive. And this would also be under the direction of the Police Department and the Department of Public Services.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. And then lastly, here for you, under Groups and Organizations, we have the Small Biz Buys Trunk or Treat.
Okay, so Andrea Blow with the Small Biz Buys is asking for permission to hold a trunk or treat again this year in conjunction with the Parks and Recreation Department at the Kennedy Recreation Center parking lot on Sunday, October 26th. And this would be from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, under the direction of the Police Department.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we'll go to our city attorney now for ordinance number 820, amending Chapter 98, cross-connection references from Michigan Department of Environmental Quality to Eagle.
You almost said it off. Thank you, Mayor. Before you is a request to amend Chapter 98, Article 2, Division 2, Sections 98-67, to update all references from MDEQ, Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, to Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, or Eagle.
So moved. Support.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Next, we have from our DDA Director, Ms. Pacino, the request to purchase holiday garland for downtown Trenton.
Thank you, Mayor. I know this is a little too early for thinking about the holiday season, but it is time to kind of think how we want to revamp the downtown Christmas decorations. So we started kind of thinking, we looked into about hiring someone or putting up the more light figures you see in the light poles. But with speaking with Christmas designer, we decided to try to do the garlands. What's nice about the garlands is they will match the Christmas tree out front, so they'll have that beautiful blue and silver, and they will light up. And we are able, if we get more than 40, we can get them for under $200 each. So that will be able to literally almost put it on every pole, either from West Jefferson, right by Elizabeth Park, all the way to Elm Street, or we can even spread it out and go all the way to Harrison. So this will be the most effective way to make a big impact on a smaller budget. So this would be all less than $10,000. We will also be repurposing the wreaths that were already there, so we'll be turning them also into kind of that blue and silver, so it'll all look cohesive. I did achieve three competitive quotes. Christmas designer provided the best free shipping and, of course, the nice discount. This was budgeted out of the 25-2026 fiscal budget. I'm asking today for the council to make a motion to approve the Christmas designer quote to purchase 50 new garlands for West Jefferson Avenue light poles in the amount of $9,500.
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussions? Seeing none, it is unanimously sorted. Thank you, Angela. Next, we've got two items from our DPS Director, Mr. Sargent, first being the Harrison Avenue Emergency Bridge Repair.
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Trenton owns two bridges-
Thank you, Mayor, the City of Trenton owns two bridges over the Frankenpoet drain, one on Marion Drive and the other on Harrison Avenue, the State of Michigan requires these bridges to be inspected every two years, during our most recent inspection in June, deterioration was found with the west abutment wall on the Harrison Bridge, our inspector, who is a bridge engineer from Fishbeck, put in a request for action on the state's My Bridge portal, this request for action calls for immediate repair, two quotes were sought from reputable experts in the bridge repair field, after a view of the bids by our city engineer in conjunction with Fishbeck's bridge engineer, I'm requesting authorization to proceed with C.A. Hall to perform the Harrison Avenue Emergency Bridge Repair in the amount of one-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, funds are available in the major street fund.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, any, Councilman Perugia?
Yeah, Kevin, do we know when the repairs start, is it going to shut down the bridge entirely, or we don't know that yet?
The tentative plan right now is, yes, one direction of the bridge would be closed, only westbound on Harrison, once they, they have to tear out the road from above to get down to the abutment wall, so only westbound would be open for a short period of time, less than, hopefully, ten days, this probably won't happen until mid-October, we're thinking.
Okay, so basically, it's just going to have one-way traffic on the other side?
Correct.
Is it not two-way, just one-way?
One-way, one-way only, yep.
All right, when that change occurs, are the schools going to be notified?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilman Cabo Watten.
Hey, Kevin, any other RFAs, were there any other RFAs that were issued that were of non-critical nature or non-emergent nature?
No, the other bridge checked out okay for now.
Okay, and so everything else looks good except for these two issues on these bridges, then?
Correct, it's just the Harrison Bridge, yep.
All right.
Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered, thank you, Kevin, next we have the request to purchase a twelve-yard dump truck, underbody scraper, and salt spreader.
The city went out for public bids in August for the purchase of a new ten-to-twelve-yard dump truck with an underbody scraper and a tailgate spreader, the bids were due August twenty-sixth, and only two bids were received, so they were opened publicly at the September second council meeting, this dump truck would be, would be replacing a two-thousand-seven model that has surpassed its useful life, this truck not only serves the day-to-day at DPW water and sewer operations, it also is a frontline plow and road grading truck. Wolverine Truck Group, in conjunction with Truck and Trailer Specialties, provided the lowest responsible and responsive quote, the lead time is sixteen to eighteen months to take delivery, therefore, after a review and recommendation by our fleet supervisor, I am requesting to purchase this two-thousand-twenty-seven Freightliner cabin chassis with all associated equipment from Wolverine Truck Group in the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars, and further request to surplus the two-thousand-seven truck that is being replaced at a future auction, this was a budgeted purchase, and funds are available in the Water Fund Machinery and Equipment Account.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, any further, Councilman Cabo Watten?
Kevin, do you have any more trucks that, I mean, so I deal with this all the time, we talked about it, but do you have any more trucks that you think are going to be up for replacement in the next couple of years?
I have one other one, that's probably two years out.
I'd probably suggest maybe looking at that here soon, and if this is what it takes to get a truck.
Agree.
You know, so.
Agree.
I say that necessarily to you, but to this council, that truck building takes a while now, and so when Kevin comes to us with these kind of concerns, it's not because we're buying it early just to buy it early, but it's because it takes so long to build these things. That's all I have, Mayor.
Well, thank you, any other, Councilwoman Rodriguez?
What is the life expectancy usually on these type of trucks? Does this one lasted for like, good twenty years, it sounds like?
Yeah, I mean, if you can get fifteen years out of it, you're doing pretty good, I mean, you're doing real good, you know, we typically, you know, the older ones, we turn them into mud trucks and stuff for water main breaks and whatnot, but you know, the plow trucks, you know, fifteen years, you're doing real well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have from our wastewater treatment plant superintendent, Ms. Wilson, our emergency repair on the secondary wet well.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm asking for council's approval on emergency repair in our secondary wet well, on around Thursday, September fourth, we discovered a lack of flow in our secondary wet well, and also saw some water coming through the grass in the secondary area, while looking into this, the cause, we discovered that the pipe that connects our secondary wet well to our final tank number one was loose and tilted, upon looking at this further, we discovered that the link seal that holds this pipe in place had broken and needs immediate repair, it was recommended to me that we reached out to Monroe Plumbing, they most recently are doing work at the Grozeal Wastewater Plant, so they do this type of work, they came out and gave me a, gave me a quote on this repair at the cost of eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars, this includes the work of reinstalling the splitter box, the link seal, and also the flex coupling that would put this all back together, Monroe Plumbing is able to come out immediately to do this work, so I'm asking your approval to award this to Monroe Plumbing and undergo the formal bidding process, this would come out of my capital improvement account.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, any further discussion, Councilman Perugia?
Yes, is this item normally inspected on an annual, you know, basis?
No, not really, unfortunately, this is kind of, it's actually underwater, it's a wet wall that's probably about fifteen feet deep, that water just flows from one part of the plant to the other, so it's not really inspected regularly, it's something that we obviously didn't know about till we started getting some.
I didn't know if you'd come in with a camera and look at your stuff on a regular basis or not.
It's not really something that we, you know, that we do, this particular thing was put in, I looked back in nineteen ninety, so it's.
A little old, yeah. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, anyone else? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered, thank you very much, Julie. All right, and then this item here is from me, asking for this body's approval, or for a motion to reschedule the regular council meetings of November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, to November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, at seven PM, and then the regular council meeting of December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, to December twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, at seven PM.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered, thank you all for your concurrence there. Madam Clerk, did we have any late items tonight?
No, we do not.
Excellent, I will defer to our Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman Benedetti, for our disbursements and statements and their reports.
Thank you, Mayor, I moved to approve the authorized disbursements for September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of nine-million-thirty-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars and ninety-one cents.
Support.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered.
Receive and place on file the financial summaries, August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, scheduled investment on cash on hand, August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, City Beautiful Commission, August sixth, twenty twenty-five, Civic Commission minutes, June second, twenty twenty-five, Historical Commission minutes, August twel- eleventh, twenty twenty-five, Police Department monthly report, August twenty twenty-five.
Support.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
And I got one for you, Mayor, motion to hold a closed session of council discussion ongoing litigation immediately following this regular session of council tonight.
Support.
Moved and supported, hold a closed session immediately following the meeting tonight, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Cabo Watten?
Yes.
Hornbeck?
Yes.
Perugia?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rezepa?
Yes.
Benedetti?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Councilman.
Sure.
All right, we'll go to other council business now here, just very briefly on my end, want to remind everyone about this coming weekend, we have the Art Festival and Lobster Festival going on simultaneously, so yeah, Thursday through Sunday, be something happening each of those days, come check it out, so that's all I've got today, should be a good time this weekend, hopefully the weather is good for it too, so we'll get started with Councilman Perugia tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, I don't have any items for you this evening.
Alrighty, thank you, Councilman Cabo Watten?
Thank you, Mayor, just a couple reminders, Somewhere in Time is going to be here at Elizabeth Park on September twenty-first, that's a coordinated effort between, I think, the City of Trenton and Wayne County Parks, also Wayne County Parks does have Heroes on Hines, the five-k run walk on September twenty-seventh, and there's also a fishing derby up in Northville at Waterbend Park on September twenty-eighth, other than that, that's all I have tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Rodriguez?
I do not have anything this evening, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and Councilman Benedetti?
Oh, you're going to hate me, Mayor, I know you will, just, is there any way we can get an update from Wayne County at some point in time about the viaduct still, I mean, I know it's down to one lane, we limit the weight, we do all those things, but you know, we're fixing our stuff, so we need to think about that, because if they start repairing at the same time we're building a fire station over there, we could have some issues with trying to get stuff done.
Yeah, no, that'll definitely all be coordinated together too, but yeah, we'll see what we can do on that front, I frankly don't know that there is going to be any update to give, it's really just a try and get funding game right now, I know that there's some attempts in it between, you know, the state, federal government, things like that, but yeah, so yeah, we'll check and see what we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hornbeck?
I didn't have anything, except I thought Councilman Benedetti would have taken care of this, go Lions.
Eric wasn't watching this weekend.
Oh, yeah, we weren't, don't worry, my grandson can't talk today.
Good, 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 good.
Blessing for you.
We'll go to our other elected officials now, Madam Clerk, do you have anything for us?
Just mentioned the next regular council meeting is Monday, October sixth, we'll have the public hearing at six forty-five, that's to establish the commercial rehabilitation district, and the regular meeting at seven PM.
Thank you very much, Madam Assessor, do you have anything tonight? Don't see, don't hear, actually, no one from assessing, won't have that one, Treasurer, got anything from Treasury? All right, nothing from Treasurer's department either, any of our departments heads have anything this evening? All right, not everyone at once, we'll go to public comment now, anyone wishing to speak, please begin with your name and address, please limit your comments to five minutes, and direct all questions through me. I'll see, I don't have anyone on Zoom, all right, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Motion to adjourn at seven thirty-eight PM, see you all in two weeks.
Mayor, are we going to be here?